I'll be back in a minute.
Who's taking copies of everything? I just want to make sure whoever knows it, they should have copies. Yeah. I guess she did, which is good. This is the guy who's two dollars, James Erving. And maybe, he's the guy on the wall. And I think he's the guy that's gonna be doing most of the work.
This is the boss.
I don't know. That sounds strange. I guess if God has a vision, probably don't let the dark somebody else in the way. But some will take it away. Jeff not coming? Not here by now?
I haven't heard him.
I haven't heard him.
No, he's not here.
Excellent.
Holy, I need a township planning commission board. First item of business is planning commission reorganization, which we have chairman, vice chairman, and secretary. Right now, I'm chair, Tom's vice chair, and Roxy's secretary. I entertain motion to nominate the chairman.
All right, we'd like to nominate Ted for chairman.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So moved, now entertain a motion for vice chairman to nominate Tom.
I'll second.
Motion to nominate second, Tom, vice chairman. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? So moved. And secretary, I can entertain a motion for nomination for secretary.
I'll nominate Roxy. Continue, secretary.
I'll second.
Okay, so moved, second to Roxy for secretary. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so moved, so stay the same. In conjunction with that, you know, reorganization, I just want to state for the record, going forward, we've got new procedures going through without Gus here. And I want to maintain a minimum amount of conditional approvals going forward to the supervisors. So when it gets to them, there's just few items for them to work with, a lot, large amounts of information has to be taken care of, before it gets out. Scott, you're about to say, you didn't hear that. We're gonna try to minimize the amount of conditional approvals moving forward to the supervisors.
Okay.
So that there's very few items handed over to them.
Okay.
I know it always sucks, but we're gonna keep it, keep it down to the move. And the other thing I want to do is, I'm gonna make a policy as, as chairman, I'm gonna not entertain actions off color, comments from here or all out of the audience about discussions that don't pertain to planning, zoning, or comprehensive plans, or things like that. So just warn, I'll shut you down quick. And that includes the audience. A little bit different what we've been doing. Okay, next item is public comments on the agenda items. Anybody have an agenda to hand out as your copies? Roxy, here.
Well, there is, there's up here, if any of you wants.
Sir, any comments on the agenda?
Okay, aye. JVI, I noticed, seems to be on your agenda.
Mm-hmm.
Monthly, I take it. Me and my neighbor here, she was my neighbor, we live on Old Harrisburg Road.
Right, I'm sorry, can you say your name?
Oh, yes, please. Jeffrey Decker, Ken Sunset Lane, York Springs. I live on the corner of Old Harrisburg Road and Sunset Lane. She lives on the other side of the road from me.
And your name's?
Julia Barossis, at sixty-seven thirty-five Old Harrisburg Road.
Spell your last name, please.
B-R-O-S-I-U-S.
E-S.
U-S.
Okay.
I'd like to be involved in the township, no crisis, see me more meetings, but I've been working twelve-hour swing shifts since I was eighteen years old. I worked twelve-hour nights, twelve-hour days, I swing. So I can't, I can't be here at the meetings, and I'm not sure if I'm talking to the right board about this or not, but I would like, can I ask what the end goal for JVI is? Do they present that to you when they come in and want to do something with the piece of land? Can we, as residents of Old Harrisburg Road, it's been taking onslaught of a lot of dump trucks up and down that road constantly? And I don't know if you know this or not, but they will go into York Springs to go north on Fifteenth. They go out to Hylersburg to get on Fifteen North. So we're south of them, we take the brunt of it.
Right.
Can, can I ask, am I asking the right board what they might have presented to you as the end goal? Or maybe a better word would be, what is their vision for that piece of property? What are we, what can we expect?
Well, it's, it was a land development plan for the main office, and as far as I know, it was their equipment storage and things like that back in there. What, what they're doing right now, if I'm correct with the wrong spot, but they're hauling fill material in, because they gotta, they gotta raise.
I see they're gonna build up back there.
They gotta raise it up like fifty feet in the base grade up to get it so it's not dirt back in.
The high dirt.
Now, I, I suspect, I'm not sure about this, but I suspect that once they get done with all of that heavy hauling, that, that would calm down something, not to say it's gonna go away, because they.
It has calmed down.
No, they'll take equipment in and out of there to the projects, you know, they, they do bridges and all kinds of stuff.
Yeah.
But they'll move equipment out to a project site, and it'll be out at that project site for a long time. And they won't be hauling dirt in there.
Mm-hmm.
It's not just dirt.
As far as I know, I, I can't say for sure.
Now, why, why wouldn't you guys have that, their vision of what they want to do with that property?
Um.
We, we do.
Yeah.
That's what the land development. He's saying he's not sure, he don't know.
Well, I'm, I don't want to commit to exactly what they're, they're hauling dirt.
All right, Ted, let me ask you this. Your sister Pat talks to my dad.
Yeah.
She's complaining about JVI trucks over there where she lives, over there at Dillsburg.
Yeah.
So is that all their trucks, that whole big fleet of trucks, coming to us? Because I understand that property's up for sale.
Yeah.
So is there end game to bring, I, I, I think there's might be seventy trucks, dump trucks. Is that coming into our backyard?
As far as the roof, what do you approve?
Not, they don't have the parking area for the seven construction vehicles. But what they are doing is they're, they are closing their Dillsburg office, and they're moving their, all their home operations to Old Harrisburg Road.
So they'll probably try to squeeze them trucks in there, I would think.
Yes, they have other locations. There's, there's not, there's really not the room.
Okay, they do have, they are gonna have other locations than you think they have those trucks.
They don't put the trucks on the land development plan. But they, but we have the parking area in the land development.
Okay.
So as Ted's, Ted's pointing out, we get so much information on the land development plan, and then we use that information to recommend to the supervisors to approve it or not. They have a conditionally approved land development plan at this point. But it's not every detail, because that, it's not our job to count trucks and those sorts of things. But it is our job for parking areas and drainage and making sure it's in, in compliance with zoning. So, and I, I, I'm not surprised they're, they're heading south instead of north, because the north intersection is so dangerous, I, I believe, I could be wrong. Ped dogs discourage them from going north. And so they're head, that's why they're headed south, for safety reasons. So we have, I, I, forgive me if I'm talking a little slower, but I'd, I'd suggest you look at the land development plan so you can see where they're headed, and you would have seen that if you would have been coming to the meetings previously. It's not gonna answer every one of your questions, because it doesn't, it's not meant to answer every single one of our questions, because we don't, again, like a good idea, a good example is, we don't count trucks, but we know the parking area and we know how much room they have. You know, I've seen their, their Dillsburg property, and we looked at that when we were considering this. And I can, I'm with Scott, I can't imagine they could put even half of their trucks that they had at Dillsburg here. It's just not the same kind of property, and it's not same grades and those sorts of things. So, but I think the best suggestion, correct me if I'm wrong, would be to look at the land development plan, and then we can discuss it further. They're conditionally approved, but there's a long way to go yet with that property.
Tom, did you tell them that they're talking about a maintenance facility for, a equipment maintenance facility? That's reasonable around in that.
Yeah, that's.
That's part of the plan, yeah.
There's a building just in the back, down behind the furniture building. And that'll be magnets for equipment and stuff. So I'm, well, I'm vague about wanting to say, I don't, you know, we say, we're saying there's not enough parking in there, probably that they can bring all their vehicles and all their equipment from all areas. And, and it's a construction company, and they operate things like projects and stuff. They'll have equipment here, and equipment over there, and maybe a certain amount of it coming back in there, but it's rotating around at different times. Both, in their mind, they weren't out all the time out on projects and making money.
Equipment sitting there isn't making them any money. They want the equipment out.
Right. I understand what you're saying about all the traffic, it's, it should, should be here at the initial development stage with all that, the loads of dirt that they have to bring in. And I heard somebody say they're getting some of that from around Gathersburg, so that's not, that's not the only reason why they, they're using the south entrance, but they can't, a load of trucks are gonna have a tough time coming up that hill in York Springs.
I get that, coming up, not going down.
Not going down.
I fully get that, I drive dump trucks where I work at.
Yeah.
I fully get that. Going, going down, getting on Fifteen North, I think could easily be done, going that way, but I, I get it coming back.
Coming back loading, yeah. But that's, the plans, there should be copy of the plan, there's copy of things in the office, back in the office.
Well, I was asleep for this JVI thing, but they got, got my attention now, you know, with all these trucks going up down Old Harrisburg Road. And now I know we're gonna talk about E and B clearing, and I understand that's table till next month?
Yeah, that's not, it'll be, yeah, discussion next month. So, all right.
Jim finished?
Jim won. At three thirteen.
This fellow here, he addressed my concerns, and with businesses and land development plans, I understand that, but does this zoning look into the business plan of what these places that we're inviting into the community are doing? In other words, there's more to it, other than just developing the, the property. For example, EB, which has been tabled, it's a very scientific operation, where you have to look at the state and ask yourself how many cubic yards of product are gonna be on there in runoff and so forth? And this fellow's saying that you got a big operation, and everybody here is saying, well, they can't fit as many trucks as the operation has on that ground. Well, is that into planning and into zoning on businesses operating within the confines of the, the earth that they're on? Does that come into discussion? And I, I just was coming over here on the way, and there was a fellow with a sixteen by sixteen drone in field. Is this township keeping up with technology? Then I look up, and there's two phone things on the way with electronics coming off. Is this township keeping up with technologies and everything else that go with what we're bringing in? You just can't say, well, here's an acre of ground, you gotta put a big pole, and there's a telephone there. What's that telephone doing to the community? Or what are we doing, inviting fifty trucks into an operation that can only park twenty? Is there ordinances that are thought through and involved? Are we asking these people for the business plan?
They, they present a plan to us with their projection of what they want to do, and that's basically, you gotta accept what they present to you.
Well, you, you, you don't have to accept what they present, you listen to what they present, and then you go into the laws, and you see if they can do what they're doing.
Yeah, we, we can't project or try and think, well, they're gonna use, yeah, a hundred vehicles going in there, why are you only asking for fifty? That's not our place. They come in here with a plan, and it says there's fifty spots there, or whatever.
Right.
And that's what we got, does the plan meet the ordinance? I, we only got the ordinance to go by, we got the subdivision and zoning ordinance. If it meets that requirement, that's all, that's, that's what we're, this board, and we won't recommend any. So.
There's things you gotta look at it. The fire department, how many people are in there, occupancy permits, all that.
There's provisions in that ordinance to, you know, to go through that. We go, we go through, in the full planning process review, we go through that.
So in the event that we go through that, and you, you approve whatever, and then they exceed and they break the system, so to speak, for, the best way I could put it into words, and they, they go out of bounds. What happens then? That's my question.
Well, it depends on where they're out of bounds. If it's, if it's under our jurisdiction, and it's a, a permit or a zoning issue, we can recommend to the supervisors to take action on that. If it's a county issue, the county can take action on that. If it's a state issue, the state can take action. So there's a lot of ways to go out of bounds, and we would, would listen and evaluate appropriately if it's within our purview to evaluate that. There are some things that aren't.
Thank you.
I just have to move over from the mic, my voice carries too much. On the JVI trucks going down Old Harrisburg Road, I don't go that often to Gettysburg, but when I do go, I have, I have counted nine trucks coming up. And by the time I'm done at Rice or the bank, I'm coming home, and they're coming back empty. So when I'm going down to Gettysburg, those trucks are full of soil.
Right.
Of fill. Now, they were working on some kind of a property, I don't know what they're doing, I, I, rumor has it it's going to be a development off to the left, and there's a big gigantic, I would say, retention pond.
Yeah.
But that's where they were originally working.
That's what I heard where they were getting, getting their soil.
Like, I've witnessed over, since they got here, and since they had that big pile of fill on their property, I thought, are they bringing fill in here and then just truck, having their trucks go the shortest distance to take it where they have to?
Well, they're taking, as far as I, as far as I know, they're taking the fill in there to the site. They, they, you, that fill fifty feet of height, that takes, takes a lot of dirt. And that's, that's why you're seeing so much activity. And once, once that fill was in, that site should have calmed down. I mean, Scott, correct me if I'm wrong, but that, that, you have the cars, you have, right now, while the office is open, and you have equipment going in and out from repair and, and back, you're not gonna have, as far as I know, you're not gonna have that extensive amount of vehicles, trucks going in and out, hauling dirt.
Now, Old Harrisburg Road is a state road, so that, for access to the state road, you have to have a ped dog permit. Ped dog requires a traffic study. Traffic study was done and reviewed by ped dog. So based on their criteria, then we zip approximately how much vehicles and how much truck is gonna be there after construction is done.
Do we get a copy of that?
Yes, the traffic study is. So after everything calms down, after construction, you'll, you'll start to see a little more normalization. It'll be mostly just employees coming in and out, like we said, and turnover from construction vehicles if they need some maintenance, or if they're in between jobs, something like that. We shouldn't be seeing, you know, forty or fifty truck trips a day.
I'll tell you, I mean, health and safety ought to be top priority.
Oh, it is.
And I'll tell you what.
That's why we have these rules.
Walking or riding the place, sitting along the side of Old Harrisburg Road is unsafe. And where Roxy pulls out down there at Willow Lane, that's a bad place to pull out. I, I pulled out Sunset Lane and followed one of their trucks down towards Willow Lane, seventy mile an hour. Why that's fifty-five there, I don't know, I drive East Run Road every day, and it's under forty-five. But it's, it, it's hazardous. Did you do anything, rode along the road, walk, ride, do anything, get the, into the mailbox?
I know, it's dangerous.
You're on a suicide mission.
It's also dangerous when you have a pickup truck going seven miles an hour through it too, so it's.
Well, that don't have, you know, four, you have twenty-four ton of material in the back of it.
Well, if you get hit by a full-size pickup, I think you're gonna end up with the same result, anyway.
Moving, moving on, we gotta, I need to approve the minutes of the April twenty-eighth meeting. Everybody had a chance to review those? Is there any additions or corrections to the minutes as presented?
No.
I entertain a motion to accept the minutes for record.
I'll make that.
Motion for time, second to file. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Yes.
See, the zoning officer's report, there is none, right, Scott, thanks.
Right.
We're moving forward more.
Right. I just have a, just one small, small comment to make, is that the zoning department will not be doing building permits anymore. That is being taken care of by the building inspectors, MDIA. That's, is Jim gonna be doing most of that, Jim Zerving? Yes. Okay. And is, is it your intent that he's gonna attend these meetings, or is that not necessary? Because you'll have the information. No, he's not gonna be attending these meetings, but he will be giving the township a monthly report. That you'll present? That I, I will share with the board. Okay. And just, it won't, it might be a week, a month or so delay. It won't be from yesterday to three weeks ago. It'll, it might be a little over than that, because he just gives it three or four months a month. Okay.
Okay. And on the agenda, we want to thank Gus, who's been our zoning officer for twenty-six years in service to the township. He was here back, this was nineteen ninety-nine, I think it was. He was here before we had, had zoning, actually. Next item is engineers report.
Uh, nothing new on Greenbrier Road, and we're still waiting for Bright Speed to do something with their line before we can finish up the restoration process.
Can you be specific there?
What? There's, there's a cable that's running from a pedestal to the stream, that is right on the edge of where we're gonna be grading and where this fence is gonna be planted. And I'm having a difficult time getting Bright Speed to do anything.
Okay, and that, is it a DSL line?
Yeah, it's a communication line.
Okay, I would offer you maybe to take that, if we're gonna take that offline, because I do have connections with Bright Speed Senior Management, that has committed to me that when we need something, they will respond.
Okay, we're gonna need that for the next project as well.
Okay.
There's a Bright Speed line that goes right over our cover that we're gonna be ripping out.
Okay, let's, let's talk about that offline, then, okay. I didn't know, I didn't know those were issues, so it's good. Come back and run it.
And we had a hard rain last week, Wednesday or Thursday, and we had some, some, the new cover was tested, and it held up pretty well.
Good.
If you need, wanna see some photos, you let me know, and I'll give you some photos of it. The Myers Town Road, construction's getting ready to begin. We had our pre-construction meeting this morning with contractor, so that's gonna be starting pretty soon. Update to the subdivision land development ordinance, that's still with Todd for his review before we go to the supervisors.
Is he giving you an estimate of when that will be done?
No.
Okay.
Plans under review, JVI was conditionally approved. I spoke with the engineer today. There was a minor notation change to the ENS plan. So I told him he's gonna have to bring it next month, get reapproved. The type of change, I require him to bring, come back to the township for reapproved. Just to make sure everything is consistent between the land development, the stormwater, and the ENS plan.
Okay.
But it's just a formality, there's, there's no substantial changes, just to the ENS plan. The Ford J-Form.
Wait, oh, you were just talking about LCDM? I think, I got. Or JVI?
JVI.
Okay. All right, you skipped over LCDM.
Yeah, it's not there.
Oh, you're on the report, not the agenda, okay.
I, I, I took.
There's not on.
I don't even know why Gus had the LCDM on there.
Okay.
There's, there's no land development change or anything.
Okay.
They got a building permit to do some building work.
Okay, fair enough. Yeah, I, Gus definitely left things on, yeah. Yeah, he left things on, okay, thank you, sorry, sorry.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna take that off there.
Yeah, please, if we're not talking about it, you can.
Action up the agenda and engineering.
Yeah, we're in the engineer's.
Uh, Ford J-Form. Ken, Scott made a notation change on the plan, and he was telling me it doesn't need to be reapproved. It's not up to him. I brought it back out, it was in the, in the office. There was just a small notation made on the, on the sewer planting portion of it.
From the module?
Well, not just the module, it was on the plan too.
On the design, or say.
Well, it's not even the design, it's, it's on the notation for the, for the sewer planting.
Okay.
So I, I understand that you got, someone already signed it.
Yeah.
It still needs, it still needs to be reapproved. So you can do that in the overall business.
Okay.
For the EB clearing Diller property, the new land development plan, I talked to the engineer last week. He's gonna be ready for, he's gonna be here next month to talk about the plan, after he addresses some conservationists for comment. after he addresses some conservation district comments and whatnot. He does have our engineer comments and the county comments. He's working through those now. This is for the retail area, this is the new land development plan.
On Harrisburg Road. Okay. I didn't know that Conservation District had comments there.
Yes, for disturbance greater than one acre, a DEP and EBS permit is required.
Right.
So, they're reviewing that as part of the state requirements.
So, nothing for us to do then?
Correct. They'll be here next month to talk about that.
They have until July twenty-seventh until they do the plant extension.
Yes. The Promaster Single Family Plan received a plan for review, and I issued comments this past Friday to their surveyor, so that's going to be ongoing for another couple of months, and then we can further all of my comments. And it was a pretty, it was a pretty very balanced plan. So, there's a lot of work for him to do, even though it's just a one single lot subdivision. With the house construction, you still have to check all the boxes, and we skipped the boxes. And that's the end of my engineer's report.
Right. Next, moving on to whole business, the JVI.
Yeah, I mean, the plan's been conditionally approved. Gus keeps it on here. I understand, because it's not finally approved. In that, we can keep it on there until it's finally approved, if that's fine.
You've got the conditional approval, so is it time, if you have time, for it then?
Yes, after conditional approval is given, there are ninety days to complete the conditions.
Okay.
And at the last supervisor's meeting, they requested a thirty-day extension for that.
Okay.
Is that granted?
Yes. So, they've now submitted the, a copy of the approved permits to me, and I received a bonding estimate for public improvements. So, I'll review that and get that right back to them so they can get that posted.
Are the conditions met?
I have not seen if all the conditions are met yet.
Okay.
He told me, Dave told me it was, I'll check and make sure.
Okay.
Report on LCDM. I'm going to take that off.
Four J Farm, talking about that. As part of what was added, and what you said, Mar.
What Ken told me was a small, some verbiage related to the sewer planning had to be changed because of the sewer enforcement officer, is what he told me.
Is it on these drawings?
That's what he...
The new language?
That's what he told me. They were here, I didn't have a chance to...
So, you haven't had a chance to look at them?
They're the ones we saw in management.
Probably, yeah. Well, you know, he had them here, and I got here as fast as I could.
Okay.
Tonight's meeting.
Well, you should review the language and give us your assessment before we approve it.
Okay.
So, I think we should table it.
Yeah.
And give Scott a chance to look at the language.
Make sure it's...
Because Scott's called whether, or Ken doesn't call whether it's been done or not.
No. So, I need a motion to table the Four J Farm and LC plan. Township engineers a chance to review revision.
And I'd call it a reapproval, so that there's no confusion over the fact that we approved when it's now been changed.
Correct.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Motion made, I'll second it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So moved. New business, not to talk about, EB clearing along Old Harrisburg Road. The plans, your plan is to have that ready for next month?
Yes.
If you have the PEPDOT permit, you have to go through soil conservation?
Yes.
There's twenty-three items.
On your report, for changes.
Yeah.
Because you're...
Okay.
Like I said earlier, there are conditions, certain conditions that we can move forward with, with DEP approval and possibly PEPDOT approval. Anything else, I want to try and clean up, so supervisors don't have to deal with a lot of odds and ends out there. It's our job to make sure that's done before it goes through.
Yeah, we need to make it easier for the supervisors than we historically have. Because there's the confusion over, was that approved, not approved? What were the conditions? And we need to make sure, Roxy, that all the conditions, as part of a conditional approval, are noted.
It's pretty much outside agency approvals, as much as...
That's a condition.
So, that's nothing we won't, is there anything else?
That's all the elements of the...
Please, public comments.
So, can I ask a question?
Yeah, sure.
I'm sorry, I'm uneducated and I'm really a pain, and I'm asking you to educate me. But now, like, an outfit like JVI and EB clearing, when they come into our township, they have a, they have an idea or vision of what they want to do, and they buy a piece of property. Now, it seems to me that they buy the piece of property, then they got to go through all these approvals and everything that we're talking about. Is there like a pre-deal made before they kick out the money for that piece of property?
No. Oftentimes, it's a contract to purchase the property pending plan approval. That's what, a lot of times, that's what the real estate transaction is. They don't go through booth closing until after they get...
So, EB clearing, that's pending?
That, I don't know.
They do on the... Yeah, so they've got to have to kick out the money for it, and they're not sure if they can do what they want to do.
Well, it wasn't just recently that they purchased it, they purchased it a while ago.
But your point's still right, that somebody may purchase property and then not be able to get approvals. I mean, that absolutely, that happens with a one-acre, single-family home where they can't get a septic field to work. So, those things happen, and it depends on how much risk the buyer wants to take on how they build the condition into their purchase.
Okay, thank you.
It can be a risky, it can be a risky business if they, if the developer, depends how they set things up. Any other comments? Not hearing any. I guess the next meeting is listed on there. Next meeting is June...
The twelfth.
Twelfth is the supervisor's.
Twelve is the supervisor's.
Oh, I'm sorry, twenty-third.
Plan commission is the twenty-third of June, at seven. What's the...
That's an area, yeah. We don't, that's up to the supervisor.
Okay.
There is a hearing, though, right? Is it postponed?
It, yeah.
There's a...
It was postponed.
It was postponed, right. And they're going to have to reapply for the zoning here because they filed it, you know, with all everything that they needed, and it's a wrong name of the person who owns the property, and there were just lots of issues.
Okay.
They requested to withdraw...
From that hearing.
From that hearing.
Right.
So, they're going to have to reapply.
And who are the "they"?
I know it has a...
Lee.
Right.
Carly.
It's also a small ninja car racing, something or other, something sort of...
No, it's southward.
It's an organization that's...
It's sports games.
The games, where they had the rodeo.
Rodeo.
It has to be, has something to do with kids driving along.
Those little cars.
Between the cross between a full...
And a go-kart.
For a car, I guess.
Yeah.
So, is that hearing for June, is that still on for that?
Here's what I know, they have an attorney who reached out to our attorney to set a date. I don't have the confirmation on the date as yet.
Oh, okay.
As Scott mentioned, they asked for an extension to give himself more time to get the information and the reapplication.
Okay.
Gus accepted the conditional use application as it was, but there's issues, as Scott mentioned, so...
And it was, it's a conditional use here, like...
Yes, it's a conditional use here, that's correct.
And before the hearing, they will come before the plan can be set first.
Yeah. Because it wouldn't have worked out that way the last time.
No.
Correct. Which was part of what puzzled me.
Yeah, correct.
All right.
They will come before the...
And we get to review the application before it goes in the hearing.
Right, and they'll come before the...
Yeah, okay.
That's our actual...
It's in the code, it's in the law.
It's in the code, yeah.
Then it comes with...
Other townships do it that way. All right. Yes.
Correct me if I'm wrong, didn't Mr. Brendan Halls announce that he had, the person had come in, or the organization had come in, and then they built the go-track, the go, you know, without a permit, et cetera? Is, am I correct on that?
They did not build anything.
Excuse me?
They did not build anything yet.
Oh, okay, okay.
There's, what, there's a rodeo.
There's a rodeo.
Existing rodeo.
And the property owner does whatever he wants to do on his own property.
Yep, okay.
They might have a quad or something that they've kicked dirt up about, but, I mean, it's nothing organized.
Well, so, not hearing any other comments around, I need a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that.
Second thought, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So moved.
I had to pick one up on a truck camera.
I'm trying to think how much, I didn't get that much on my range age, but I probably got five.